Waters.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
O'Kane.
Here.
Shaner. Scott.
Here. Can we stand for a moment of silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free government of our nation, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Ron, come on up. We're going to interview you for the Act of Transportation. You've been here before. We appreciate your service. And tell us why you want to keep it up.
Well, I think I bring some of the good experience to the table as a cyclist, and I utilize the trails in Sioux City. And I can see and have road areas that need work. And, you know, I give a good perspective on some things that could be better and things that are good now. And I think it's a good having me on the board is that I give good information. And I'm out riding the trails, not just driving by them. So I'm on them. So I know what's good and what's bad.
Gets you out of the house and keeps you active. Good for you.
Absolutely.
Question, Ron?
No, I think it's an important perspective, and I really appreciate you and keeping that group active. I think that that's really great, and especially what you guys do for education in our community about bicycle safety. I think that you're seeing, in my opinion, this council and really our entire community is kind of rallying behind the notion behind getting outdoors and improving our trails as best we can. And Matt and his team have been great with trail connectivity and things like that. The mayor and I were commenting on plywood trail and stuff like that. So I think the future is bright with that, and I really appreciate your perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Ron. Okay, next is Art Center Board of Trustees, Anne Kellogg. Hi. Tell us a little bit about why you want to serve.
So I actually have served a partial term. I think it is eighteen months. And I think the Art Center is a very important aspect of our community. We have a great arts representation here, and I just want to be involved and help it be the best it can be.
That explains why, Anne, it seems like it was just yesterday you were interviewing.
Right? No, it was very short. Yeah.
Yeah. But you're doing a great job, and I'm really glad you reapplied.
Great. Yeah, I enjoy it.
Thank you.
You're right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Richard Yates. Richard, go ahead and go to that microphone if it's easier for you. Either one, yeah, this one's, either one's as easy as for you. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
I, my name is Richard Yates. I am an instructor at Briar Cliff University, where I teach graphic design. I've taught there for the past five years. Before that, I was teaching graphic design and arts at Morningside University. And I'd like, art is a big part of any thriving community. And I'd like to just make sure that I can do my part to help keep it accessible to all of us as citizens.
Questions?
We were talking about your application before you got here. And one of the things we mentioned is that you now teach at Briar Cliff, and we were wondering what made you come to your senses. You don't have to answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It would definitely be good to get a different perspective.
Yeah. They give me a hard time because we get a lot of Morningside professors and staff members that want to serve and hold different positions. So they were welcoming, yeah, they were definitely welcoming some Briar Cliff applicants. So it's good to see you, Rich, very much.
Thanks for the application. We appreciate it. Thank you.
You'll do great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peggy Long, Inclusive Sioux City.
Evening all.
Hello.
Hi. Renewing my appointment with the Inclusive Advisory Committee. Very involved in the Asian community, and I feel like renewing my appointment will do great. And plus, I also do a ton for our community as well.
Questions?
Peggy, thank you so much for getting, I think you were on for one year already?
Yes.
Okay.
Second term?
Yep, it's your second term. Thank you for re-upping. So appreciate it. You're already so involved with the diverse community. You're growing that side of town. It's great. I appreciate it so much. And I've enjoyed a lot of the festivals and the activities that have gone on over there.
I'm so glad you joined us.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Parks and Rec, Al Sturgeon. Your references are a little, or one of them at least, well, both of them are a little suspect.
I tell you what.
We'll try not to hold those against you.
Figured I'd apply anyway.
Yeah, exactly. Roll the dice.
You know, I've lived in Sioux City all my life. Quality of life in a community is directly related to the park system. If you want to see one of the best accomplishments this council and city's ever done, it's the riverfront. And if you would have looked at that riverfront forty years ago, it'd be hard to believe that it could turn into the asset that it has. And one of my reasons for getting involved in this, in addition to the fact that it's nonpartisan, is that I want you to take a look at that Floyd River Valley right now. Can you imagine a more hostile environment? There's two low flood dams, or those low head flood dams. They have one purpose today. They kill people. They have killed people. The rest of the Floyd River Valley is full of these huge rocks that are as inhospitable as you could possibly get. It shouldn't have to be that way. That whole Floyd River Valley could be something very impressive. And I keep talking about it, and I saw this opportunity to come up, and I thought, maybe this is kind of a way to take a look at that. So other than that, I'm a newcomer to the community.
Yeah, no doubt. Questions? Al, thanks for making the application. And I also want to thank you for all the years of service you've given to citizens.
Well, thank you, because
In your practice.
As I have always told people, there is no more thankless job than either running for city council or the school board. The mayor should know he's had both.
Let me tell you, this is paradise compared to the school board. But thank you, Al.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Al. We're going to go to the consent agenda, which is items three through sixteen D. Consider those items to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call is requested by a council member. If you want to speak on the item, please come up as I read it. If you want to speak on an item not under the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. But remember always to state your name and address for the record, and then provide your statement. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Three is a reading of the city council minutes of December eleventh and twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Four is the Mayor's Youth Commission twenty twenty-three accomplishments presentation. It's all yours, Mayor's Youth Commission. One of our favorite days of the year, right, Mary?
My name is Mary Coaster, and I am the Director of the Mayor's Youth Commission and the Sioux City Young Ambassadors. We have a group from our Executive Council here today to talk to you. They will first introduce themselves, and then they will tell you some of the accomplishments that we have done in the year of two thousand twenty-three.
Hi, everyone. My name is Grace Hodge. I go to North High, and I'm the Mayor of the Mayor's Youth Commission.
Hi, I'm Adelaide Gassaway. I am Mayor Pro Tem and Mayor, co-Mayor Pro Tem of Mayor's Youth Commission.
Hi, my name is Maria McGowan. I'm from Healan, and I am a co-Mayor Pro Tem.
Hi, I'm Kayla Von Hayden. I'm from East High, and I am a project manager.
Hi, I'm Audrey Raveling. I'm from North High, and I am a hospitality director.
My name is Leila Lilly. I'm a sophomore at North High School, and I'm the legal director.
Hi, my name is Nhan Gasi. I'm a senior at East High, and I am the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Director.
Hi again. My name is Grace Hodge. I'm a senior at North High, and I serve as the Mayor of the Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission. And now, members of the Executive Council would like to present MYC's information.
Hi again. I'm Adelaide Gassaway and co-Mayor Pro Tem. And I go to North High, and I'm a senior right now. The mission of the Mayor's Youth Commission is to explore, communicate, and provide for the needs, problems, and issues and activities affecting us and the city's youth.
The goals of Mayor's Youth Commission are for youth to make a positive impact in our community and feel valued, to encourage youth to develop into their full potential, to hold leadership sessions for youth to increase their knowledge and skills, and to participate in community service and activities, and to have youth feel like they have made a positive impact in society. And our two thousand twenty-three adult advisors are Anais Adame from the Sulan District Health, Christopher Courtney from Sulan Cares Community, and he is the community coordinator, Sergeant Jim Cunningham, Sioux City Police Department Liaison, Linda Ellis, community volunteer, Mary Coaster, Sulan Cares Youth Services Coordinator, Rachel Lundgren, Sulan Cares Executive Director, and Louise Paskey, who is a parent volunteer.
The two thousand twenty-three Mayor's Youth Committee Executive Council, there are currently twenty-three members, and all of these members have served one year on Youth Commission or were previously a Young Ambassador, completed an application, and interviewed for the position. Our two thousand twenty-three membership for the general is sixty-four Mayor's Youth Commission members, seventy-nine Young Ambassadors, which makes a total of one hundred forty-three participants. All of these members come from Bishop Healan, East High, North High, West High, Sulan Christian, and Vibe Academy.
Young Ambassadors is, oh, I'm Audrey Raveling. I'm from North High. I'm a junior, and I'm hospitality director. Young Ambassadors is a recognition program for students grades seven through fourth who display good character. All nominated students receive a free Young Ambassador T-shirt, a gift certificate from Brooke People provided by MYC and public recognition. From the nominations, thirty-one students were selected to be mentored by members of Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission.
I'm Leila Lilly, and I'm the legal director. Executive Council members provided an orientation for thirty new MYC members. The top concerns of the new members were poverty and homelessness, food insecurity, drugs, alcohol vaping, bullying, social media technology, cellphone obsession, and mental health issues.
Members contributed two thousand nine hundred twenty volunteer hours to our community. We also volunteered at sixty-seven different events. Our goal is to make a positive impact in our community by increasing our volunteer hours.
Thank you all. The Mayor's Youth Commission would like to thank all of you for your support of our organization and for giving us the opportunities to serve our community. And we invite you to attend and participate in any of our meetings and activities. We are happy to answer any of your questions now. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you.
Or comments, go ahead.
Yeah, great update, great report, always is. And it's just outstanding what you all can do together. You achieve a lot for this community, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you, Al.
I hear all the time from other organizations that you guys volunteer your time for. It seems like I always see the maroon shirt somewhere at some event. What was your favorite event over this past year?
I think the Whipple Ball is always my favorite.
Okay.
I love it.
Who won the Whipple Ball game? Was that us? Did we?
We did.
Oh, we.
City of Sioux City.
If these guys won, it'd be the weakest field you've ever seen in Whipple.
Right, for sure.
I want to raise.
Well, thank you. You guys do a great job.
Thank you for everything you do.
You do incredible work. Make us all proud.
Five is a resolution appointing new members to the Youth Commission, now the administration of the administering the oath of office. And I'm going to have Dan help with the Mayor Pro Tem this year. Is that okay?
I would first like to talk to you about our new members.
I would like you to do that.
We have a great number of new members this year, forty-nine. That's the most we've had in a while. Of our applicants, thirty-eight are female, and eleven are male. Ethnicity, African American is two, Asian American is three, Caucasian is thirty-nine, Caucasian Asian American, one, Caucasian Native American, one, Latino Hispanic, three. They come from five different schools: Bishop Healan, East, North, Sulan Christian, and West. And so we would like you to approve this list today, and we will have an orientation for them in January, which we would like to invite all of you to come to that to make a comment.
And how many are from East? I have to talk to the incoming president.
Okay, here we go. Healan is thirty-five, North is four, Sulan Christian is four, West is five, and East is one.
Got your work cut out for you, Madam President. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. All right. I want Kayla Von Hayden to come to the microphone, please. Come on, Dan, you can. You're going to get more than one next year, right?
I will.
I want to hear. Raise your right hand, please. Do you, Kayla Von Hayden, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, execute the position of the Office of Mayor of the City of Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission during the year two thousand twenty-four, and to the best of your ability uphold, promote, and support the ideas, activities, and mission of the Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission by serving as a positive role model leader and the voice for MYC? If so, answer, I do.
I do.
Congratulations. Good luck this year. We'll help you all. Audrey. Hello, Audrey. I'm really proud to be doing this, and I wanted to let the Mayor's Youth Commission one more comment. You do make a difference. You truly make a difference. So are you ready? Okay. Audrey Raveling, please raise your right hand. Do you, Audrey Raveling, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, execute the position of the Office of Mayor Pro Tem of the Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission during the year two thousand twenty-four, and to the best of your ability uphold, promote, and support the ideas, activities, and mission of the Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission by serving as a positive role model leader and voice for MYC? If so, answer, I do.
I do.
Congratulations. Okay, we'll go on to number six, which is a resolution authorizing the Utilities Director to execute the required EPA Eco Engineers and the Energy Authority documents to the Renewable Fuels Project at the wastewater treatment plant. Seven is a motion authorizing the city staff to enter negotiations with Passio Technologies for a mobile fare pay system for the transit system. Does that mean we won't be taking any cash after this? Because some people that are old still like cash. We don't like cards.
Mike Colette, Assistant City Manager, yes, we will still be accepting cash.
Okay. Items A to A through A to D are motions accepting and approving annual reports. A is a Historic Preservation Commission. B is a Public Museum. C is the Yamanashi City Sister City Committee, and D is the Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee. Nine are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting the plans and specs for the Court Street Section one thirty curb and sidewalk improvement project. B is a resolution adopting plans and spec for the Convention Center Call Wall Panel Replacement Project. Ten are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a contract to main bridge construction for the Forty-first Street Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project. Gordon, in light of the announcement today that we can finally announce about improvements and projects that are starting to occur out there, do these guys understand the absolute unbelievable importance of this project? Because we're going to be in for trouble if that project is not done on time.
There are time limits on this project with liquidated damages. We have not been able to meet with them yet because we have to sign off the contract.
Well, when you meet with them, and then it's incumbent that we have regular meetings making sure that that project is rolling as it should. Okay?
We typically do every other week for all our projects, major projects set up.
I just, this one affects, it's got a down.
Yeah, there's just a lot riding on it for sure.
Yeah, exactly. So, okay.
All right, Gordon Fair, City Engineer.
Thank you, Gordon.
D is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with DGR Engineering for the Pierce Street Water Main Replacement Project. C is a resolution approving a billing services agreement and business associate addendum with EMS management controls for emergency medical ambulance transport billing. D is a resolution approving change order number one to the contract with Rock Solid Trail Contracting for the Cone Park Natural Services Trail Project. E is a resolution awarding a surface provider agreement to Eco Engineers provide a quality assurance program audit at the wastewater treatment plant. F is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Baker Tilly for the Classification and Compensation Study Project. Like to pull that for a vote, please.
Moore.
Hi.
O'Kane.
Hi.
Shaner.
Hi.
Scott.
No.
Waters.
Hi.
I think that comes from Bob, but anyway. D is a resolution approving a post-construction storm water management plan maintenance agreement and easement with McGee and McGee for detention basin property at forty-five oh one Gordon Drive. A lot of this lot is just asphalt cuttings. Now, I don't have a problem with it. I'm the one guy that probably doesn't. But when did we start approving that? Planning and zoning? Mr. Madsen, somebody? Chris, do you know if that's approved? Can people do that now on a car lot? Because they never could before.
That was approved through DRC, correct. Chris Madsen, City Planner.
Okay. Well, that's a dramatic change in city policy. And I'm not sure used car lot, that's a good change.
We are exploring used car lots and our standards regarding that. We did just present to the Planning and Zoning Commission last week to get guidance on changes to that ordinance.
But they're already parking cars out there. So it has been approved?
Correct. Their site plan was approved.
Well, somebody's going to have to show me, because in your ordinances, you didn't allow that. Because I'm the guy that argued about parking trailers that would never move down there at Thermal King. I remember you guys wanted all concrete, and we said they could get by with that. But now, all of a sudden, you're going to allow that surface? And I just, I want to, okay.
I can get you the site plan. That would be approved.
I don't care what your site plan is. Your ordinance doesn't read that way. That's my point.
But they're already doing it?
Done. They've got cars parked. I don't have a, I'm not, I just want to know when we changed. So you can get me that, you and work with Nicole, but. H is a resolution approving a post-construction storm water management plan and maintenance agreement and easement with Briar Cliff University for a detention basin in the property at thirty-three oh three Rebecca Street.
Mayor?
Yes.
I need to abstain on that item. Conflict of interest.
I is a resolution approving First Amendments to the Development and Minimum Assessment Agreements to Floyd River Flats, the property is one thirty Nebraska. Eleven are applications relating to personnel. A is a resolution amending the Authorized Personnel Complement Position Classification Manual and Salary Schedule by approving an updated job description for word processing supervisor and reclassifying a lead word processor to word processing supervisor. B is a resolution fixing the salary of the city manager. C is a resolution fixing the salary of the city attorney. Twelve are actions authorizing payment. A is a resolution authorizing payment to Subserco for the West Third Street and West Street Intersection Improvement Project. I need to abstain. Conflict of interest. B is a resolution authorizing payment to RP Constructors for the La Plant Avenue Waterway Replacement Project. C are resolutions approving fund transfers for November. D is a motion approving claims and total expenses and receipts for November. Thirteen are actions relating to property. A is a resolution scheduling a hearing on proposed amendment number four to the amended and restated Donner Park Urban Renewal Plan, the property at fifty-seven oh one Alhain Drive. B is a resolution proposing to sell the vacated Hera Street, Granville Street, and alley adjacent to thirty-one hundred Hera Street. Petitioner is Jason Mann. Items thirteen, thirteen C through thirteen L are resolutions inviting proposals for the lease of land and scheduling hearings. C is a property at twenty-four oh four Hawkeye Drive to Head of Little League. D is a property at forty-nine for the sale of land in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area, announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Sulan Sply, scheduling a hearing, the property at thirty-eight twenty Highway seventy-five North. Matt, where's the soccer complex in Riverside? What's happening there?
While he's coming up here, Heidi, I need to abstain on thirteen A for a conflict of interest, please.
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. We're kind of waiting on that one. We need some direction from the council through the upcoming budget process, and then that one can come back if that's the direction we received.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Mayor, on these other proposals for lease, we're awarding a purchase order to Burt Gurney and Associates for a Fairbanks rotating pump assembly. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to McQueen Equipment for a two thousand twenty-four Vector twenty-one hundred I combination sewer cleaner. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order to thermal scientific portable analytic instruments for a Truenarc detection system. Fifteen are applications for beer and liquor license. Sixteen are boards and commission and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items. We're voting electronically.
Pass is five zero. Recommendations of planning and zoning. Seventeen is a hearing and ordinance amending chapter twenty-five point zero five of the municipal code entitles by development to provide an extension of the interim sign ordinance. PNZ recommends approval. I guess I'll move it, but I'm not understanding why.
Well, I'll second it, and I'd like to hear both the chair and from Chris Madsen.
Sure, Andrew Gleiser, here of Planning and Zoning. I guess, what is your question?
Just a summary of what this is, just in simplified terms for me.
Anyway, it was kind of a look at what we currently had for signage around town, the possibilities of additional signage, or we're not allowing signage going into certain areas. And we looked at different spacing between signs, and as signs go to illuminated signs that where the boards can change every few minutes, just how we were going to govern those, so to speak. And that's, this is the plan that we came to agreements with, with the help of city staff.
So those are the digital, the digital signs that?
The digital signs are part of this.
So we're looking at square footage, though, of those, or?
Not so much square footage as distance between them.
The distance between them, from digital and the other sign.
The billboards. Correct, correct. Normal billboards.
They're not going to be any different, though. You're going to make it all a thousand feet according to what you're doing.
Six hundred.
How much?
Six hundred.
Chris Madsen, planners.
Planning and zoning came late in the game with a thousand feet.
Correct. What's in front of you today is the extension of the interim sign ordinance, which is the moratorium on any new or potentially changed off-premise signs or billboards. The Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting last week did vote on the proposed changes, and they did change that separation requirement to six hundred feet. That would be before you on the January eighth meeting. So today is just the extension of the moratorium.
Till when?
March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, they're going to bring the changes back January eighth.
Correct.
Why would we wait till March thirty-first?
To allow you time to review those changes. If you approve the ordinance that Planning and Zoning made a recommendation on.
Well, once we approve the ordinance, what is there to review? What am I missing?
Today is only the extension.
Of the moratorium.
I get that. But if we approve it January eighth, and then we have till March to review it, what's happening that I'm missing?
If it's approved, we can modify that date.
Correct. If the change that's coming before you on January eighth is approved, that would end the moratorium at that time.
Oh, okay.
Today, we're just putting a date of March thirty-first to give you time to review that, to hold multiple hearings.
So we have up to March eighth?
Correct.
That the moratorium could stay in effect.
If we bring the changes to council, you want us to look at more changes?
Right.
If you defer it, we want to give you some time.
Okay.
But if that ordinance is approved, the moratorium would end before that date.
Hopefully, it won't take us out.
Cross and Ts and dot and i's. And this stems from, or probably doesn't stem from, but it was a larger conversation we had at the joint meeting, if I remember correctly, right? We had the gentleman there, if I remember right, from Verde that wanted to talk through some of those. And we were talking about the problems with proximity, because a lot of times, I mean, you look at whether it's the viaduct or otherwise, and then the ability for any new competitor or any new sign company to be able to enter the market. Really, it would be difficult to be able to find.
Really, it would be difficult to be able to find that space, right?
Correct. And it's gonna continue to be difficult to find, we're not making it any easier to put up something, to be honest with you.
It is, it is a challenge. And it's a challenge from this side of the table, too, thinking about, well, I'm sure what you guys were going through as far as your discussion. Because you never want to allow a monopoly, right? You're not trying to encourage any one company to be able to monopolize that. But that's what sometimes happens when you have one company that was established here for so long and established so many billboards and, you know, then they were bought out, which is, you know, fine, and that's business. But now, there isn't a lot of space to necessarily be had. I mean, unless with future expansion and different things, but.
Yeah, I think what threw me off the path, and I apologize, was in the write-up in our homework, the motion that was made to go to a thousand feet for both static and non-static billboards.
Correct. During the November twenty-eighth meeting, that was the Planning and Zoning Commission's vote. The meeting last week, they did change, after Verde did attend the meeting, expressed their concern with that number, and they did change it back to six hundred.
So that's what would come to us on the eighth?
Correct.
Just as a practical matter, the six hundred, how do you determine six hundred feet versus one thousand or whether it's seven hundred? Is there something about the blocks, how long the blocks are, or?
Be approximately two blocks. And we did look at what other cities, what their requirements were, and that was about the middle of what other cities were requiring. A thousand was about the high end. Our current requirement of two hundred was at the low end. Six hundred was very much in the middle of all those different requirements.
Okay. So that's about two blocks, then?
Correct.
That would be a part on six hundred feet. Okay, thank you.
And that was probably the biggest input to us is what other communities were doing around the area, is what their distances were, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with Alex that it does really present a problem to those who wanna do new business in town because of all of the properties and the signs that are already owned, you know, by Verde as it is, so I don't know.
Or even introduce competition. It's just so difficult to-
Very difficult.
I mean, the trouble with a monopoly is then you set the rate and there's no way around it if you wanna advertise that way, so.
Thing, I don't, never been to planning school, that's pretty obvious. You guys didn't have to have me say that to figure it out. But there must be a course called the Lady Bird Johnson Course, where you learn how to get rid of every sign in a community even if you can. We're gonna have a problem in this community with the viaduct. There's a lot of signs on the viaduct. I personally don't find those offensive. I look at them and read them and appreciate businesses. But even at your six hundred feet, are they gonna be able to replace? How far apart are those spread now?
That'll probably fall more on the DOT than it wouldn't.
No, not if they build them all, not if they come off that bipod. If you come off the viaduct and you're not on DOT right away, if you buy from the person below and put up a L-shaped, I'm guessing that's not gonna come under DOT. I don't know. I don't think it does, does it?
It's only primary highway, so only the interstates that the DOT would review.
Right. So that's what I'm seeing. How far are most of the signs spread today on the viaduct? Anybody know that answer? Because we shouldn't-
They're definitely not two blocks.
Yeah, we looked at the joint meeting.
We talked about that. We didn't think we'd be allowed to be back up.
No, yeah, you're fine. Was that grandfathered in or once they come down, they can't go back up?
I think that's what we were told, is once they're taken down for the viaduct, they cannot be allowed back up. Mayor, remember, I brought that up to you and that's where I got it from. I couldn't remember.
Well, I don't understand that because you're taking a lot of ability for people to advertise off this, out of this community, which, which only what we're doing for the average business is driving the price of outdoor advertising way up. Because those are gonna become so much more valuable. And I don't understand why we have such a problem with billboards. I guess, I don't know.
We weren't looking specifically at the viaduct. We're looking at the-
But the problem is, you gotta look at the community. Because there's lots of zones these guys don't want any signs in. And I maybe understand that better, but on a high-traffic street, I don't, problem, I don't care. I drive Floyd Boulevard going home two, three nights a week. It doesn't offend me at all to have a billboard on my way home. But we're pretty much gonna be doing away with this kind of stuff with this ordinance.
Those viaduct ones, we may have to grandfather those back in.
You can review that.
I don't remember what the distance is, but they're definitely not two blocks apart.
No, that's my point. I'm not-
I've looked at those for campaigning and I've driven back and forth and-
Got that specific.
I don't have the specific number. I know that during the Planning and Zoning meeting, Verde said they were comfortable with six hundred, but we can check that and see what that spacing is.
And that's where it's difficult, you know, writing an ordinance or anything and having it affect the viaduct, but also having it affect new or different areas in town where you probably don't want it every, more than every two blocks or some-
And I still have a problem with, we just can't put a sign on a lot. Dr. Roach got banged up on Floyd Boulevard. Alls he put was Christian or Catholic radio station and we give him, it's on hold until we decide this, but it just is mind-boggling to me that people can put the trashiest signs in their front yard, and I think you know where I'm talking, Julie, and we can't do anything about it. But somebody puts a sign like that up there and we gotta go tag them.
Well, we'll have time to work-
It's a fine line.
I mean, you guys, yeah, Planning and Zoning is gonna give us their proposal.
Right.
We might need till March, yeah, that's what I was gonna say. We might need till March thirty-first, actually, guys, so.
Do you read much about how traffic safety comes into play on billboards and signage and digital signs? Is there much written on that as far as traffic safety? Are we concerned about traffic safety, or?
Traditionally, that's one of the higher concerns, is correct, is traffic safety.
What is the higher?
Traffic safety in regard to billboard, digital, yep.
That people will be gawking at them and it's distracting?
And you don't have it in front of you, but we used a lot of the DOT requirements when we formulated the code.
But that all goes back to Lady Bird Johnson. She hated billboards and she wanted them off every highway in America. She couldn't, the Wal-Drug signs all the way across this country just drove her nuts. And that's where it came from. You're too young to remember. You're too young to remember it. I'm telling you, that's where it all started and they won't be happy till they're all gone.
And President Lincoln had no problem with it.
Yeah. Well, Wal-Drug was there with him, but.
I'll have to take your guys' support for it.
Well, it sounds like we're gonna have some good discussion on this.
I don't think traffic's-
Going forward.
That's why we wanted to extend the moratorium.
And that's great. Yep. I mean, I hate the moratorium if there's people waiting in line for something new. Do you know if there is?
I believe there's one out-of-town company that is with-
Right. So we'll work as quickly as we can.
And we're working with them, keeping them updated.
There's a lot to cover, though, right?
I think back in the day, though, traffic safety was not her priority. It was more of-
More she didn't like that on the countryside.
What looks pretty and what looks nice and does it look clean? I don't know.
And I have actually heard that the electronic billboards are safer than the other ones, so I don't know.
I'd like to see the stats on it.
I'd like to see the stats on that, but-
I don't think you're gonna find stats on either one, but-
Probably not.
Go ahead and get that now that you've said that's-
They don't keep those. We'll have to go to the museum and get Lady Bird Johnson.
So if we vote yes on this, it means we don't, why would we have to second and third?
Because it's the moratorium. Because the moratorium date was passed into the ordinances, so it would need to be changed to extend it.
Okay. That's why.
Currently, the moratorium would end on December thirty-first, so otherwise, it would lapse then on that date.
So we pass this, then we revisit it on the-
Passing the moratorium extension, gotcha.
How long you been working on this?
July.
And the guy that we spent all that money on planning our city didn't put anything in for this?
We didn't alter the sign ordinance during that. We just moved it into the new-
You did on my business another-
On-premise, some items were changed, correct.
Okay. I vote no. Everybody else votes yes. I'm-
The moratorium, you're voting no?
Yeah.
Why?
I'm ready to have it go away. We should-
Can we do our second, third?
Pass the sign ordinance and get it over with. We've been-
Well, first, we have to agree on an ordinance to pass.
You're not gonna convince him of that.
Oh, mayor.
Eighteen is a hearing and ordinance vacating a portion of the alley block bounded by Dase Avenue.
Can we do a second and third?
Second, third reading? Oh, come on, no.
Our rule is if anybody objects to it-
Well, you're right.
Then they shouldn't-
Okay. No, I don't want you to change it.
No, I know what you're saying because then people can apply for a sign. Go ahead, make the motion. I'm not gonna vote for it, but go ahead.
There are no objections from the others?
No.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Hundred percent aye.
Scott?
Two hundred percent no.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. Motion you need for second and third.
So moved.
I think Mr. Moore was supposed to say that.
I'm sure who does it.
What did you say? Motion?
Motion, I didn't, yeah, I didn't. You moved it, you needed a second.
I'll second the, I'll second the motion for the second, third.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Almost had you. Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Eighteen is a hearing and ordinance vacating a portion of the alley and the block bounded by Dase Avenue, Washington Avenue, South Cleveland Street, and South Nicklet Street. Doug and Pam Hesse, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it.
Second.
Public hearing's now open. Anything?
Not pretty straightforward for us.
Okay.
Did I get a second on that?
I thought Dan did.
Did you? Thank you.
Try to lean more into the mic.
I'll lean in.
Passes five zero. Anybody opposed to waiving statutory rule? I don't know.
No.
I'll move second, third, or the stat, to waive the rule.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
I'll move second, third.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Hearing nineteen is a hearing and resolution approving construction documents for the South Cecilia Street Reconstruction Project. Public hearing is now open. I'll move it. I'm sorry, I'll move it first, my bad.
Second.
Public hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Citizen concerns. Are there any citizens in the audience that wanna be heard? Seeing none, we'll go to Mr. O'Kane.
Really looking forward to break. Looking forward to spending some time with family and I think everybody is right around this season, so. That's it. That's it.
All right.
Good for you.
Short and sweet.
Julie?
Well, I'm looking forward to break as well. I'm gonna open the Pandora's Box and say I'm very happy to see that the water park development agreement has officially begun and that it's out in public. It's been going on for several years. I just want everyone to remember that this is the first step of future development out in that area. The city has acquired several pieces of property there, the forty-three acres where the water park will begin and another fifty-four acres out in that area as well. The fifty-four acres is intended for some light industrial or some other form of commercial property development. The water park will begin with approximately ten to twelve acres. I think they're intending on investing twelve to fifteen million dollars. It's going to be a very large professional park with possibly some future plans for other phases. There could be other amenities added. There could be restaurant, food, I mean, hotel, we don't know. But I just want everybody to keep in mind that this is a first step to developing that area. So that's what the sewer line goes in for. It will service the entire regional area as well as the detention ponds that are going in. So it's super exciting that this group wants to invest in our community. They saw, I think, Facebook posts and things out on social media that we would love to have a water park attraction here and the city just was not able to put that in our budget over the years. I have to say, my very first CIP in twenty-twenty, I opened that book up and I saw programmed out five years in our future, water, what was it called? What do we call it?
Water park.
But it was called something else.
Aquatic Center?
Aquatic Center was noted. And I was just like, yes, this city's finally gonna get a water park. And then they said, no, 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 we're really not getting that. We want to get it, but it's out many years ahead because we can't find the funds to do it. And that continued on every year. And now, this group is going to put one in for us. And I'm very happy to have worked with you guys, Joe. I'm sure you'll meet with the news afterwards. It's been a lot of work, but it's been a lot of fun and it's worthwhile. And I look forward to the city doing more business with you in the next years to come and appreciate it very much. It's very exciting news for the city. It really is. I hope, I have. Happy holidays, everyone.
Alex?
Yeah, no, I wanted to say a couple of things. First and foremost, I wanted to give a shout out to the staff and everyone at the Tyson Events Center as well as the Arena Sports Academy. I think that, you know, that specifically with Tyson Events Center, the NAIA National Championship Volleyball Tournament was really exciting. I think it was really, it went smoothly from everything I heard and was able to observe. I made it to about one game and then I was out of commission the rest and just still not feeling well, so. But what I saw was really great and I heard a lot of good things and a lot of good feedback moving forward, so that's pretty exciting. And then, there was also just a tournament that they held in conjunction with the Arena Sports Academy down there, a basketball tournament, and I heard that that went well. Really drew in some regional talent and scouts and everyone as well, and I think that's pretty exciting for our area.